I guess we're all here.
We've got to get Greg on and what your definition of is.
First, you know what that definition of the vote is?
Well, you said, you say you want to.
I will see the audio and then switch it up. The session that bridge line.
Oh, I got you. Oh, I hope the answer is I don't know. That's. Depends on how close we're.
Heard G committee meeting or committee meeting.
I don't know either. I think it'll be about.
Having a Macau.
And I. It is that.
Danny, did he?
I thought he was the only one that.
Yeah.
Was reasonable. But. Should've come down.
Coming on a energy conference. Yeah, yeah.
I'll follow you. We'll be coming back. Sure.
Oh, good.
Being my. That's enough.
Yes, no, we've all. Reminds you may have, right?
Oh, yeah, we have. Actually, she's much stronger. So's my son. Right, yeah, just ready.
We often either, either they do what their parents do or they do the opposite depending on how that goes.
I agree with you. Are you independently?
Well, but I mean, they don't wishy washy around you.
Yeah.
They, they either fall or they fall or they fall in off.
Uh, we, the city council will now meet an executive session to negotiate real property transactions. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S one nine two six six zero two E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we'll return to open session and welcome everybody back into the room. Okay, so are we?
What are we exec?
Okay, got it. Okay, you're ready.
So just as we get started here, uh, you might remember the last time we talked about property sales, there seemed to be a general consensus among the council that before we start any sort of negotiations or further conversations with people that have interest, you want to come back to the council and get your guidance on how and if you want to proceed. And so that's what we're doing. We've been approached and Danny and Catherine will talk about specific properties that were approached by a couple, uh, folks interested. And so we're just coming here to let you know that before we proceed with any further conversation.
So I'll start. Um, we're gonna keep this fairly short. Um, as John said, it really is to let you know about two very specific properties, um, and the general approach that we plan on moving forward in the negotiations of those, of the properties. And so the first property is located on the corner of Eighth and Mill, and it's across Eighth from the federal courthouse, but we, a lot of us know as the old Hoots Restaurant site.
Yes. Old what?
Hoots Restaurant site.
Yeah.
Um. It's not Hooters.
Not Hooters.
It's not Hooters.
I'm aware. Like as they search records, it's three A M. I hear.
The second piece of property is located on the corner of East Broadway and Hilliard Street, and it's across the street, uh, it's across Broadway from Cafe Yum, right next to that hotel that's right there. Um, both of these pieces of property are remnant parcels that were left over from some larger acquisitions, the Eighth and Mill from the courthouse, federal courthouse, and the Broadway Hilliard from that, um, Hilliard Street extension. So as John mentioned, we've been approached separately by a couple of different parties, um, seeking to purchase these prop, these two properties independently. It's not, uh, some collective action. And neither of these properties have been advertised for sale by the city. And so we're coming to you today to let you know first that we've been approached and then also to kind of let you know what we, what our anticipated plan here. One of the options would be for the city manager, obviously, just to negotiate with these interested parties. But based on your discussions previously, and most recently in June, about approaches, that's not really the way we're anticipating doing that. Um, we intend to do, to develop a public process for disposing of both of these properties. So the properties are quite different, as you probably now are imagining them in your mind. Um, when it comes to size, significance, marketability, they're both fairly different. Um, so we'll use both public process, but different. We anticipate them being different for the two, for the two properties. The Eighth and Mill property is located in the boundaries of the downtown plan, and, um, and it's a key piece of property with our Willamette to Willamette. And, um, so we anticipate a public process that will look at, um, proposals and have some criteria around that, and then you can speak to that more. And the, and the Broadway and Hilliard piece, um, it's just different. It's landlocked, it's, um, right, uh, there's no access to it. You've got the property owner right on it. It's not within the downtown plan. So we anticipate a public process, but a different one. Um, and so what we anticipate next steps would be to come back to you. Um, and we want to, you know, get an understanding of what, what your temperature is on how we, on these two properties. But the, uh, general next steps will be to come back to you with a proposed process for each of them and how we plan on moving forward. Um, I'm gonna call on Mike now. I'll call on George. And then you can.
From my perspective, and thank you very much for the presentation. These two properties are very different animals. I appreciate that we'll have a process coming back to the city.
Mm-hmm.
For me, the, the first one, we took by condemnation because we thought we'd give it.
We didn't, we, and Danny can speak to this, we, I believe we passed a resolution authorizing it, but we negotiated the, uh, purchase of it. It was the threat, as we found it. I know, yeah.
We bought it when it come to the head, but yeah, we bought it, right? So, um, uh, my, my sense of the justice of, uh, is, is to speak initially with the previous owner. Now I doubt very much they would have, because that seems like the right thing to do. I would say, number two, the second piece. Because I understand it's, it's landlocked, because I understand it's building block, and has no entrance to it. There's really only, uh, less something substantial happening, really only one buyer for that property. So I would, I would hate to see us hold them up as a, uh, for an unreasonable price, knowing that those things are true.
Well, I'll clarify.
Okay.
The hotel property is actually, the hotel is owned by a different entity than the land. The hotel sits on a land lease, so there's actually two different interested parties there, both of which have discussed some interest, so it's, it's not a single party. There's a landowner, then there's a hotel. Um, the, the properties are actually very similar. They're similar size. Um, I think we negotiated the sale of the, or the purchase of the parcel next to the hotel, but it could have ended up being a condemnation of procedure because it was for a public purpose. So I think they're very similar, similar size. They're both in the down, ones in, both in the riverfront district, urban rural district, ones in the downtown planning area. Both are connected to larger properties that I think, as you're trying to say, are, um, probably bring more value if, if you kind of connect the same, yeah, so they're kind of similar.
Let, let me just say that what I mean by that is this, um, number one, both that property and the private one on the other side of the sixty-six are incredible nuisances. The amount of garbage and the amount of, well, you know, you know what they're, you know what the condition of the properties are and the amount of trash that you have to pay hazardous removal teams to get out. And the amount of just unsightliness it is at the very entrance gateway to our city. My point was, I would hate to see us trying to maximize dollars out of the sale of that profit being an inhibitor to getting that redeveloped in an attractive way at the entrance to our city.
If I could say that a little stronger.
Okay.
Um, the Eighth and Mills site is on Eighth Street. It's on the Willamette to Willamette path. We've made a huge investment in infrastructure and courthouse and Northwest Community Credit Union and Return to the River, and so I think that's a very, very prominent site. It's very important what happens there. I kind of feel the same way about the other side as well. It's, it's a different entry point to the E web riverfront, coming from the university. It's adjacent to the riverfront E web property. I think it's, it's a prominent location. It's part of our river district's conversation. I think both of them are very important as far as the outcome, and that's why I don't think it warrants just putting a for sale sign and, and selling it to the highest bidder. I think we would be interested in the outcome.
I, I agree with you entirely. My point was about that dynamic tension. I would, I would want to make sure that we don't mess up that one by, by taking advantage of that dynamic tension. We would want to make sure that a deal got done and that something appropriate got built there, not that someone would walk away because they were feeling held up. Thank you.
Glad we're having this in the executive session because we didn't want anybody to think that we were about the business of holding people up. George.
I, I, that. Thanks, Mayor. Um, you, you've mentioned public process for both of these, and I don't, still don't quite understand what that means. That means, let, let me just, does that mean there's going to be a public notice that these properties are available for sale and will be invited on, on each one? And, but you said it would be a little different on each one.
I think our idea is to come back with a recommendation for each, and then, and we might end up with the same process. They might be different. Um, the sites are a little bit different, some of our obje- objectives. But I think, um, incorporating some of our downtown plan goals, our river district goals, um, Willamette to Willamette goals would be important in that process, not just it's for sale and we're interested in the highest bidder. So when we say public process, I think it's trying to design a process where we can achieve a best outcome, whatever those are. We need to spend some time defining what our goals are and objectives are for each one of those sites.
Sure, yeah, that makes sense. I, but the city wouldn't necessarily have, I mean, it could be, perhaps it could be structured, maybe. Um, we wouldn't necessarily have to sell for the highest bidder. We couldn't, the city decide, okay, yeah, these guys are offered hundred thousand dollars more, but we feel that the bid number one is meets what we're trying to achieve here better or something. Is that a possibility? But we believe.
Yeah.
The process is a varied, we looked at how we disposed of, I don't know, a dozen plus properties, mostly in the downtown core area, and they've all been done a little bit different. R F P, R F Q, R F I, negotiating, um, all of those things are, are within the realm of possibilities. But I think what we're trying to stress and what we heard in the work session is a process that's a little bit more public than just a designer.
Yeah, well, I think that would be good. That's one of the problems with many property transactions, but, um, who, can, can you tell us who's interested in the old Hoots site?
Um, the obvious one is the, the G group because they own almost, they've consolidated almost. The Justinas, yeah.
Our group.
Um, and, um, they don't own a couple of parcels within that kind of block between Ferry and Mill Street. Um, so they have ob, they're an obvious, uh, party that would want to finish off. That's an important part of the puzzle there for the property they've consolidated. There's been another party, he's a broker in town, and frankly, I don't even know if my first names would probably be meaningless. Um, and he's approached Public Works with us. Um, and then I'd mentioned the two parties, the landowner and the hotel owner on the other side. The, the landowner is, um, an out of town California family, um, maybe even in trust. I think, you know, Connor Woolley owns the hotel.
Where, now where exactly is that one? I'm having a hard time visualizing if we want to.
It's Kitty Corner from.
Oh, that, that.
Boogaloo.
I see Boogaloo. That's, that.
The little corner there, and it's just.
Oh, yeah, that small parcel, yeah.
It's a remnant from when we did the road construction.
Right, 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 right.
We didn't actually buy that or acquire that property from either the property, the adjacent property or Connor Woolley. It was actually owned by Diamond Parking, that little corner. So we just took a piece of the Diamond Parking corner, um, in that transaction.
Right, yeah, thank you.
And Autocraft owned the Eighth and Mills site, you remember the story?
Alan, you're next.
Yeah, um.
Can I get in the queue, please?
Yes, George Pauling?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Anybody else want to be in the queue? Uh, I absolutely, uh, agree that we need to have an open and transparent open process with an opportunity for everyone to put in a bid on both these parcels. Uh, and expressions of interest so far are not related to the fact that we want to say that it's surplus. So if we say it's surplus, then there might be other people coming up. These are just people thought of this on their own, so they're the likely suspects in, in a transaction, but, uh, there might be other people interested. So, uh, absolutely, transparent, open, public process with a, an open bidding process. I understand fully that there are different parcels and they're within different planning, uh, jurisdictions, within different plans, that's just how I say it. So they weren't thought about what we want to achieve and how we want to integrate them into the plan and what we're trying to achieve with that. So I, that, that, that sounds good for me. Um, I've been waiting for years to, uh, sell that property, for us to sell that property in Hilliard and have it redeveloped. I drive by it every day I go to work, and, uh, it's just been naked, reed lot for ever, as far as I can tell, uh, very, very long time. Because the wall, back wall of that hotel has been there for, uh, that hotel's been there for probably forty plus years. Uh, and it would be great if that, uh, well, and I think the useful life of that hotel might be coming to, to, uh, uh, an end sometime soon, so redevelopment of that whole lot isn't actually, uh, a, a, a great opportunity uh, for, for that particular spot. And it is actually a prized spot. It's right on Hilliard and, and Eighth, and it's very, very visible. It's right on, uh, right on Franklin, so there's people go by there, thousands and thousands of cars every day. Um, so I agree that it is of value. And, uh, so, uh, uh, having an open public process for everybody to bid on both of those makes a lot of sense. I can see that the, uh, the, the old Hoots, uh, site has value as well. It's a very, very, uh, visible spot. Um, and also the Justinas, they've been almost all, except for maybe one lot, the, the Korean restaurant. They own that whole block, uh, so redevelopment of that, uh, by them has been years in coming too. So, uh, with Whole Foods going in there and the courthouse and the hub, now it's time to go. Whole area of bates and restaurants, so we should get some redevelopment. And I think it would be great if we could help facilitate that. But again, open public process with everybody giving all bids, and I think we need to be, uh, doing that as well.
Chris?
Thank you. Um, do either of these areas fall into previous, um, planning areas or are part of previous planned documents?
Yeah, the, um, the Eighth and Mills site, the Hoots site is both within the downtown plan boundary and the riverfront urban rural district. Um, the, um, hotel corner site is, um, within the riverfront urban rural district, but just across the street from the border of the downtown plan, so it's actually outside of the downtown.
That's kind of what I thought, and what I was getting at is, have either of those properties been subject to any significant conversation about use within a planning context?
I would say, um, probably very strongly the Eighth and Mills site, the Hoots site. Um, mainly because of the whole idea of Eighth Avenue being the path to the river. That's a, um, prominent concept in the downtown plan, and it's a key corner, um, in that making that connection to the river. So I would say less so on the other side because it's outside the plan area.
Yeah, yeah, I would be, but there hasn't always been some conversation about uses for that property. It wouldn't be a blank slate in terms of the city's thinking about it or anything. Uh, I also am very supportive of the notion of going through a more public process on this. And part of what drives that is the notion, and we learned this, I think, with the Broadway Plaza conversation is, any property owned by the city of Eugene, I think, is perceived by the community to belong to them. And because they perceive the property belonging to them, they feel rightly so, that they need to have, um, an awareness and an access to the process that goes on and be able to be aware of what's happening on their property. Um, so to that extent, we have to balance it with saying, well, it's my property and I need five years to decide what to do with it, to, to figure out what is the appropriate level of ensuring that the public feels they're being involved in the use of their property and not having this drag on forever and ever and ever in a, in a circular kind of debate. So I think that's where you come into play, and that's why I asked the question about the previous plans, to show that there has actually been a significant amount of time spent on that piece of property and what it could potentially be, not intense, but at least it's, it's happened. So when we do go through a public process, we at least have a baseline to begin with in terms of what we'd envisioned that property fitting into the larger community. And I guess that's the point I really want to emphasize is I don't want to start at square one. Uh, I want the public involved, but I want them involved in a way where they're building on work that's already been done. And I think that's the appropriate balance I would look for, but otherwise I, I, I like what we're doing.
George Pauling?
Okay, thank you. Evidently, we're all thinking under the, uh, the equipment because I'm only picking up about every third word of what Steve said, so hopefully I don't repeat too much. Um, you know, I'm, I'm okay with going into a public process as far as, um, making the decision on whether or not to sell the properties. However, I don't, it's buried in the reason on this as to what do you own or the property is going to develop. Uh, I feel as long as it's allowable for the zone that it currently is zoned and is consistent with any vision or plan to encompass that area, uh, you know, that's basically up to the new owners or the buyers, uh, to develop what they have in, in mind. Uh, my only concern is that if the property is sold, if the buyers have some real near future, not immediate, like thirty days out, or real near future plans for the development, that, that we can at least see before we say yes, we're willing to, uh, sell the property. And the, uh, these Broadway and Hilliard property, uh, you know, that's been kind of an eyesore for many, many years as well, the old Hoots parking lot. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of if somebody's out there who wants to go ahead and develop on that, I'm all in favor of doing that, uh. But I'm, you know, kind of hoping it up to the public for, for anybody else that, you know, may, may be interested in buying it and just wanting to worry that, you know, you know, the, uh, the people they still want.
Thank you, George. Uh, Denny?
I think there should be an, an announcement that these properties are for sale and an R F P. Um, I assume that we could control what goes there when it comes to the permit process. I mean, if it has to be zoned the right way, they can't just do anything. They couldn't put in, probably couldn't put in a strip club, I don't know. Sure, but I think, is there some way that we could, that we could say you can't buy it or speculate, that you have to build something within a certain number of years? Would that be legal?
Yeah, we, I mean, as part of the request for proposal process, we could say, what are you planning to do? When are you planning to do it? And it could be part of the evaluation.
You could say something like, within three years, something has to happen.
Yeah, it could be part of that evaluation process.
We've done that a lot, actually, so we have a pretty good track record with Condominians and L C C and Northwest Community Credit Union and others where we can lock in and help come in timelines.
I know that, that speculation is possible. And Connor Woolley held downtown for years, regulating. Um, so I was, that's what I was wondering, if there's a way to guard against that. Okay, I, I very strongly feel that we should, should have an R F P, and everybody should know it's for sale.
Okay, um, uh, Alan and Mike in the second round, and I think we're gonna try to move on. So, uh, before that, I just wanted to say that I really agree with the public process as part of this. I think it's really, it's important to our community. I think Chris is right about that. I also think he's right about the, uh, trying to frame a historical perspective on this for people so that when it first is talked about, it isn't just something that occurred to us yesterday because somebody showed up, that we actually, um, have been thinking about the future for this area for a long time and are looking for something to help advance in that direction. So I, I, I agree with both. I think it's really important how we, how we talk about it. Um, oh, now I'll go with Alan.
Yeah, I agree with what, what Denny said. Uh, I, that, uh, we need to have a developed plan for the timeline associated with it. We don't want to, we're sitting on it forever, detriment of both those parcels, so I agree with that entirely. Um, are we requ, what's the rules around this? Are we required to take the highest bid when we go out and do that stuff, uh, sell these at surplus? Or we can pick amongst different, uh, uh, proposals?
Or?
And that, that's not dependent on price?
Well, at this point, we have, they're not declared surplus.
Yeah.
And that's not part of the, what we anticipate coming forward, since they're both within, like, the one on Eighth and Mills within a plan, and there's a process for that. So it's not locked into competitive bid, take the highest bid. And that's part of what we anticipate bringing back to you for both of these properties is, is kind of the approach we'd be taking for it. And that will happen in open session, but, and that information, but no, it, we're not.
Um, and so what is the process outlined generically? Do you have to declare it surplus, the council does, or?
No, we don't. We don't have to declare it surplus. And Danny, you can speak of this. I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of different options. And so what I think, I mean, like, when we look at downtown and how we've done this in the past, that there's a lot of different ways we've done it because there is actually a whole lot of different ways we can do it, um, including direct negotiation with these folks who come in, um, declaring it surplus and going to the highest bidder, um, doing a request for proposal, particularly, you know, you've got Eighth and Mills part of a downtown plan. You've got code provisions, so we can go out and try to get people to help, you know, get proposals that facilitate that plan. Um, so what I think, uh, Danny and his group anticipate doing is looking at what is the best way of moving that forward. But I don't think there's any anticipation of it just being, hey, highest bidder coming in. It's really gonna be connected to part of the overall process.
Given the, the interested parties are on both those parcels, uh, I think it's doubly important that it not look like a sweetheart deal that, you know, transparent open process. And just elaborate a little bit, and, and with all due respect to Taco Bell, I think you could actually put a Taco Bell there, maybe by code, but that's not the objective we're after. So I think being more prescriptive about the outcome, I think, is very important.
Mike, and then we're gonna wrap this.
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked for a work session on this very subject so that we could have a set of guidelines for how we deal with this rather than have a number of options and us pick one based on the situation. But have more of a, 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 a rediscussed process that applies to staff in such cases. And from my perspective, it was because I wanted it to be a much more public process. I wanted something that, hey, we don't just do this, and I mean, you, you heard me, I said all those reasons. Um, and I think it's, I need to, I think I need to work with, uh, refine language on that particular one, I think, still. So that's my point. Um, but my point earlier, I think, is subtly different from that in that. Let, let me ask you this way, Danny. Have you ever come across a situation where the disclosure of what type of business might be or what type of, uh, use in, in too specific a way would inhibit that development because of the necess, the necessity of a competitive advantage or something? Want to develop something, but they didn't want a potential competitor to develop it.
Um, I think there have been cases, and I'm, I'm going back to the old Sears site downtown, where we, there were a few R F P processes before L C C landed there, where one of the responses was, we'll give you X amount of dollars for that, but don't tell us what to do. Um, so we have seen, we have seen some proposals like that. Um, I don't know that it's inhibited, um, interest necessarily because if we're really clear about what we want, generally people don't respond, if they don't fit that criteria. Um, and I just elaborate, I would just say reinforce, I think it is important to s, say what we want and say what goals we want to achieve here and make that part.
I disagree with you on that. I wasn't debating that, what I was suggesting. Is there a limit to the amount we can require upfront before perhaps we endanger the actual thing being done? And here's my reason.
Absolutely.
Would you anticipate that there are any other potential people who would want to purchase that piece on the corner of Hilliard and Franklin other than Connor or the family that owns the place next to it?
Potentially if they thought they could assemble the rest.
If they thought they could buy them. But the, the point being is there's no access to that property. You can't pull into it at all. There's no driveway. There's no driveway, so the only way you can access that piece of property is through the motel once it's torn down.
And we're, we're not so prescriptive when we do an RFP. We don't say it has to be four stories of housing with brick and, you know.
But that was my.
It's usually urban design and walkability and, and density and some other goals that we're trying to achieve and some preferences for housing maybe, but it's usually not so sp- prescriptive. Then it eliminates the opportunity for people to get creative.
What's most important there is, as Alan said, it not remain an empty lawful weeds for the next twenty years. So, if, if we have an opportunity to get something built there, I think we should let a few things stand in the way of doing so in an appropriate public way.
Okay. We're going to, um, thank you very much for that and we're gonna close the executive session and go back to our regular session.
Okay, there we go. All right, we're back in our regular session and we have a discussion on a city hall update. City manager?
Thanks, Mayor, and I'm just waiting for our staff to come in to, um, lead us in that conversation, so. Busy, here we go. Yep.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, there.
Ready to go, when you are.
Okay. Well, if you recall, last time I was here in September, uh, talked a little bit about the process for, uh, uh, cost reductions and rebid on the phase one city hall. Sure.
Switching us over. Oh, there we go.
Okay.
All set, all right. Uh, and, um, uh, talked a little, little bit about the process. We did some brainstorming to come up with a, a number of, of issues, narrowed that down, uh, brought a list to you which, uh, was attached to the AIS for, for this meeting. Um, and so, um, the point of this is, is that we need to get started with this work in order to be ready and, and have it bid, uh, by February, which, uh, we, we think is a, a good window for rebidding. And so, uh, we need to at least get started on some of this work, but we'll be back in November for final direction on go, no-go on, on the rebid. And so, um, there was, there was a lot of information and, you know, obviously you were trying to drink out of a fire hose last time, so, uh, we scheduled this meeting so you have a little more time to review the information, ask questions and so on. But it really boils down to the, the three questions that are, uh, in the AIS here. Does the council want the project team to continue with work on a rebid option that includes the low-cost reduction items presented at the work session? Number two, does the council want the project team to continue with work on a rebid option that explores simplification of the south facade, including elimination of the double skin? And the third question, does the council want the project team to continue with work on a rebid option that explores targeted changes to the mechanical system? Um, in my mind, the, the first item is, is fairly obvious. If we're gonna rebid, we ought to take advantage of what we learned from the, the bid process and a thorough review of the documents and, and so on. And, uh, those are things that we would want to do regardless. Uh, number two, that's the area where we really think that, that we could reduce the cost of, of the project by a fairly significant amount, but, uh, we need to explore that further to verify and see what it looks like and, and that sort of thing. Um, the, the third one is, is really the one that's kind of, um, really has the policy implications of, do you want us to explore some reductions in the energy efficiency in order to save some costs on the front end? And, um, again, we wouldn't do full design work, but we would at least explore it a little further to see what the exact energy savings difference was a, as well as potential cost savings. But it would take some fees to explore that. And so, if you have no intention of, you know, reducing the, uh, energy efficiency standards, then we wouldn't want to pursue that. So, that's basically the overview and to bring you back up from where, where we were in September. And, um, I'd be glad to answer any questions other than that. Please discuss and, uh...
I've got Mike and Betty and Alan in the queue. And first, I just will say that I'm, uh, one and two seem to make good sense to me to agree. Um, I'm not personally wanting us to reduce our energy efficiency and sort of go, go against our basic goals for, um, uh, making a divest energy usage building we can. Um, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for the sake of the public who's watching and will see reporting on this, um, and for me as well, remind me why it's important for us to make these decisions at this time, considering the fact that we're still working with the county on what might potentially become a better option at the Butterfly Lot, as well as any other options that exist. And everybody's aware of my favorite choice on that front.
Right.
So, so why is it important that we make this decision right now?
Good question. And, uh, so, again, a reminder of process, this is a decision to get us started so that we can bring back better information in November for a final decision. If we wait until November to start looking particularly at the design changes that would, uh, be involved with removing the double skin facade, lowering the upper canopy, some of the, the ripple effects from that, um, if we didn't start until late November, we wouldn't be able to be done in time for a rebid in, in February. So, we're not going to spend, uh, you know, we're not gonna fully redesign it, but we want to take it far enough to bring you some information in November for good decision-making.
Wouldn't a reasonable person say, well, gosh, now that you've already done all this work to, to redesign and to, to get all these other options done, isn't it kind of now too late? We kind of have to go with the new building on present location?
And I can help with that, Mike. I would say no. I mean, I think the, what the council has asked us so far is, um, and the options are redesign and rebid, explore with the county, options around Butterfly Lot and, uh, continuing on the, on the current site. And so, as Mike suggested, this doesn't presuppose an outcome any more than the, the conversation with the county presupposes an outcome. Eventually, all that information comes to you and any other information that's helpful for you to make a, a decision, we hope, and, uh, before you go on break, that gives us the direction of where we want to go.
I just wanted to make sure none of us were confused about that and had that kind of sentiment when we get to the final decision-making process. But, uh, I, from my perspective, as I did previously when I asked if this was gonna come down to a vote, my vote would probably be no because I think we have a better option available to us that we're not exploring thoroughly right now.
Betty?
Thank you. Um, let's send Mike down to A-Web.
That's an option.
Um, no, that's not. I, I did have the same question. Why would we be doing this when we don't even know which location, which may make a difference? But I would say definitely don't sacrifice on the energy. Um, that was ostensibly one of the reasons for leaving the place that we should not have left. And, um, I will keep saying that, just like Mike keeps saying, A-Web. Um, the, um, getting rid of the extra skin sounds fine to me. I think it would help if we had some pictures or some illustrations.
That's it. That's what I'm asking you to do is let us continue on that so we can bring back some pictures in November for your final decision.
Yeah, but I think, I think that would be fine. And the other part, I, um, I don't know really.
Can I get in the queue, Mayor?
Sure. So, I did, Alan, Chris, George and Claire. Alan?
Yeah, I, I understand the, the timing of this and it totally sounds appropriate. We want to keep all our options on the table and if we don't move forward this, then we don't get to have this on, on the table. And, uh, MCC or McKenzie Commercial Construction's guess is that February 2017 will be a much better bidding climate, or their guess is as good as anybody's, I suspect. Hopefully it will be. Um, and so that makes sense. Uh, and keeping all the options on the table should make sense to me, although my guess is that we'll end up right where we are, uh, unless the counties will only reimburse us for the, uh, substantial increases in costs of, what I see, probably two to three million dollars to, or more to move the, move the city hall. I'm not sure that is probably in the cards, so I, I think we're gonna end up right where we are. Um, I think we should continue with this bid. The second skin makes sense, uh, and the mechanical, uh, o- only if it's cost-effective to do that. Um, definitely reducing the energy efficiency seems counterproductive. Trading off short, short-term upfront capital costs for long-term operating cost, uh, is kind of, uh, not the, the way to, to do this, um, reduction in cost. The big savings, when I look at all this, seems to come from removing the second skin.
Correct. And, and the ripple effects that go with that.
Yeah, it's quite substantial. That's what all these, uh, diagrams are, all the things that get removed because of that. So, that seems to make sense. Can we see a drawing or something of what that would look like?
I think that's what Betty just asked.
Yeah, I'm reinforcing that.
Yes, and, yeah, we'll have that in November for you.
Yeah, these don't, these don't cut it.
No, this is just...
They don't have that yet, that's what you said.
This is just an, an initial look at some of the things we could do for the purposes of quantifying, uh, some of those aspects, but it's not meant to be a design exploration or, you know, aesthetic exploration at all.
I, I don't, I don't think it would really change the aesthetic of the building too much.
Well, uh, that second glass facade and the, the catwalks and, and shading structures, it, it, it's a fairly substantial addition to the front of, of the building. And, uh, uh, as, as I mentioned in September, I, I think done well is, is an opportunity maybe to hold to our values of simplification or, you know, uh, simple and, uh, actually make a better design. That's, that's the hope anyway, and that's what we'd like to explore and bring back to you.
What were the other areas that you found that would create the most savings or other changes?
That, that was the main one. Um, the, uh, mechanical system could be six figures, uh, in, in terms of, of savings, but it's, it's at, uh, at cost of long-term operational costs and, and so on. Uh, so, you know, I'm not recommending it, I'm just putting it out there as a, as a decision for you, but, um, really some of the redesigns of, of, uh, and some detailing of, of the exterior envelope and some of those are, uh, documented here. It's a, it's a little arcane trying to get into the line items and so on, but, uh, uh, exploring that with, with the design team and with the contractor, but it's primarily the, the removal of the, uh, the second skin and the design implications that, that go with that.
I did actually want to get into a little bit of the weeds and the line items.
Sure.
One eleven, the AV work session. Um, one of the most annoying things about our old city hall was how far behind it was in terms of technology and the ability to use that to facilitate our meetings and make the public aware of what we're, what's going on.
Right.
So, having that not be there seems like counterproductive to me. Um, and then, uh, uh, and then the cedar, uh, one fourteen, the cedar wood, um, and, and on the ceiling and other places, um, I thought one of the big things was reusing the cedar to be able to, you know, on the interior and putting, and not doing that, uh, I think it would be a mistake.
Yeah, I'll, I can speak to both of those real quickly. One eleven, uh, that, right now, the design has for the work session room has both a projector and an LCD screen. And so, what we're proposing is because of the size of the room, use the LCD screen and, and eliminate the projector initially, wire for it so we can add it back in later. But, you know, we were just looking at, at some things that, uh, and, but the council chamber wouldn't be affected. We'd still have a, a good quality projector and sound and, and all of that. One fourteen, if you come over to the notes section, that would be a bid alternate. And so, it would simply be a way of, once we got down to the guaranteed maximum price, do you want it in, do you want it out? And so, we would have the, the cedar as the base design, but have an alternate for a, uh, a nice acoustical ceiling, but, but without the cedar. Um, and, and again, if, if you have no interest in pursuing those kinds of, of things, because I, I agree, the cedar was, was a critical aspect. But these are all the types of things that you do in a value engineering exercise and, and we, we weighed some of the values, you know, project values with, with some of them, but capturing them in alternate seemed like an easy way to preserve an option if we come and we're close on the guaranteed maximum price and, uh, we don't have to go back and do some legwork at, at that time.
Right, yeah. If that's not subs- if that's savings is substantial, I might want to look at it, but not otherwise. Uh, five hundred point three and four, that's the air source versus ground source geothermal heat pump?
Right.
What, what are we doing with that?
That's, that's the one where, uh, that was question number three on, in the AIS. And just to do a quick summary on that, the, the current estimate for savings or energy performance beyond code is forty-three percent better than code with a ground source heat pump. The air source heat pump would reduce that to somewhere in the twenty-five to thirty percent better than code. So, it, it would be a reduction in energy efficiency. We believe it would still keep us eligible for a two hundred thousand dollar Oregon Department of Energy grant that we've applied for and have been preliminarily approved to move to the next round. Uh, it, it would save a net of maybe a quarter of a million dollars, uh, on the first cost, but would reduce the energy efficiency and, uh, would actually have a shorter lifespan than the ground source heat pump as well.
Definitely. Now, double almost probably. Um, and the last one was, uh, north side and south side strategies to deal with the way that those were being, uh, put into the bid structure or bid, bid package?
Right. And again, those, uh, those are identifying alternates. So, the north parking lot, we could identify, uh, as an alternate so that the base bid has the parking lot, but we have an alternate, uh, to pull that out, uh, not knowing currently what we're doing with the, the east parking lot. We might do some temporary parking to offset it. Again, this was just trying to give some tools for you as the council and us as the city to use when we come, when it comes time to do the guaranteed maximum price. Um, and rather than trying to think of some things later, trying to include those as bid alternates now so that, that we could have that information when it comes time to put a guaranteed maximum price together. Uh, same thing on the plaza, um, again, because we're, we're not sure what's happening on the east side, if we took, uh, perhaps the east half of, of the, the plaza, and this is identified in one of the, the diagrams that, that was included in, in the packet, but use some, uh, crushed granite or crushed basalt as a means of, of having a, a good stable temporary sur- uh, surface. And then later, as, as we figure out what we're doing on the east half, then finish off the, the design and, and the paving and so on. So, again, it would give, and decide too later whether we want to include a, a fountain or not. That was a, that's been pulled out of the project entirely at, at this point because of the cost issues. But that would preserve the possibility of adding that back in later as, as we develop the plaza in conjunction with the east half of, of the block.
And also is a thirty percent reduction in furnishings and twenty percent reduction in plantings?
Um, we subsequently don't, don't think it makes any sense to pursue reduction in plantings. You're just spreading, spreading them out further and you're, it actually costs more to change the drawings than, than you'd save. Some of the site furnishings did, did come in, uh, did come in fairly expensive and so, and they were custom designed and, and, you know, they were, we're really trying to maximize the, the public's experience of the plaza and so on. But, uh, once we got the bid costs, it's really, I think, unreasonably expensive. And so, looking at some off-the-shelf items that we could purchase that are still nice and good quality and, and meet the values of the project, but not the cost of completely custom-designed pieces.
One last question, one oh five. What's a smoke shoe for the exterior?
I was wondering if someone would get to that. It's just a, a specification item as part of the, the bidding, um, it's, uh, I, I don't even know what it is to tell you the, the truth, but it's, it's part of the, uh, smoke containment system for the, the central stair and it's just switching out one part for another that could, one of the bidders said you could save some real money here if you just changed the spec on that. And that, that's typical of, of a couple of items like one oh one, a, a additive to the concrete that, uh, would be good for slab-on-grade concrete, but it's also specified for the floors that are off-grade and, and it's just a spec item that we missed. And so, we're picking that up and saving it, you know, eighty-five, eighty-five hundred dollars.
Thanks. Um, three points. The first one, uh, I agree with Alan. If we're gonna build a twenty-first century building, it has to have twenty-first century technology in it. It has to be capable of doing what we need it to do for the rest of the century because essentially that's what it's gonna be. Um, second point is, uh, that by doing this process, we're not actually eliminating any options, we're actually keeping them all viable. Um, because I am still open-minded about all the things we're discussing. I don't want to take anything off the table. I don't want to make anything unviable, um, but I'm not gonna be doing that forever. I'm mindful of the fact that I want some certainty sooner rather than later on what's gonna happen. So, uh, I, I like the fact that we're still discussing options and I am open-minded about those options, but there eventually has to be a, an end to that, which is why I'm glad we've put terminal dates on some of these things. The third point, specifically with regard to cost savings, is I'm still thinking of the ultimate outcome. And I look at every single one of these with... And I look at every single one of these with the thought, is this a smart thing to do now and is this a smart thing to do in 50 years? I'm only going to get to make this decision once in my life. In fact, I think everybody at this table is only going to be able to make this decision once in their life, so I better do it right. And I don't want to create a false economy today that I wind up suffering for, not me, somebody in the future winds up suffering for later on, gets back to the what were they thinking question again. So I think the things you've recommended, I just want to make sure that each one of those not only passes the test of what is a smart thing to do today, but also passes the test of, well, that was actually a smart thing to do over the long term. So some of the choices of material change outs, in 50 years, is that decision to change that material from, say, high-grade aluminum to lower-grade structural steel, from concrete to brick, from this to that, is that going to be, are they still going to say that was a wise choice in 50 years? I don't want to make those kinds of false economies because I don't think we are under quite the same cost pressure we may have been at one time. So I don't want to, I don't want to save a nickel or a dime just to waste a dollar later on. And to me, that's going to be a very overarching consideration. So every single one of these recommendations you make, I'm going to be wanting to say, is it a good decision today and is it a good decision in 2056? Or 2066? Because that's, that's the point where they'll say, what were they thinking? I mean, I already have some pangs about removing seismic reliability, or not removing it, but not having it as robust as I think it should be. And so I want to make sure all those other decisions match that same point. So just as you go through these, I'm going to be testing that, because that, to me, if I'm only going to make this decision once, I want that decision to be just as sound in the future as it is today.
George Brown.
Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you know, as far as direction, further direction for today, I think I seem to see general agreement around the table that we should not do number three and not mess with the mechanical system. And I think we all want to have an energy-efficient building, and we all seem to agree on that one. But I think, I think most of us think that number one and number two, you know, pursue the no-cost or low-cost reductions, and then also the facade, eliminating that outer skin, seems like a good idea to pursue those two. And I'm just kind of looking at the schedule here. So November 16th, is that when you're going to come back with the finer-grained?
I believe that's when we're scheduled to come back.
I see a City Hall update, and I'm assuming that that is the next time you would be coming with.
Correct. There may be an intermediate check-in for progress because of the timing of the joint elected officials meeting and so on. So you may need some information ahead of that, so we might come back for a brief check-in. But final decision-making is scheduled for November 16th on the bid, rebid or not.
Okay. And then, it's my understanding, now, are we going to be meeting, I couldn't find my calendar from the packet, but are we going to be meeting with the JEO?
Yes, coming right up.
On the 19th of this month, I believe?
That's correct, next Wednesday. And then there's also one scheduled for November 14th.
14th, yeah. So the one next Wednesday will be the preliminary report from Cameron McCarthy, and then the more detailed one on the 14th.
Correct.
About next month. And then our meeting two days later. Yeah, that's good, so.
And there will be, we anticipate having, as Mike said, at least one other work session in there somewhere to have more conversation about any and all related topics, you know, coming out of the JEO. Because as you know, in the JEO, we actually won't be talking about this information, it'll just be strictly the Cameron McCarthy report.
Cameron McCarthy. Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay. So anyway, we'll have had three, at least three and maybe four meetings, three, before the 16th of next month. And by that date, some of these things that are swirling around in smoke and cloud should maybe be taking form. And I don't know if we would want to be making any final decisions on the 16th, but we may, that might be a day where we could really look at all the options so far, and Cameron McCarthy may need a little more time, or we may need more time to talk with the county and decide. But I'm kind of looking forward to that meeting, maybe we'll begin to see some figures emerge from the fog.
Betty wants to point out is that the November 16th City Hall update, she and Gregor both would be gone, and it might be a very important day for them to not be gone.
Yeah. So we will find the date when everybody's here, since it is a 50-plus-year decision, so probably appropriate that everybody's present. So we will, we will work on that.
The other thing I wanted to say is that in our conversations about the JEO meeting, they're going to show you the different, what do we call it, blocking?
Mashing.
Mashing, right? And then the thought is that we'll put together a meeting after that so you can dig into that, what you've seen at the JEO meeting. So you'll get the introduction to all those things, and you'll have, then we'll have a meeting at home, so to speak, on, with all the questions answered about that.
Will they have costs? Will they have costs associated with them?
Not yet.
Not this next JEO meeting.
That's the detail one.
Yeah, no, yeah. Can I just make one request? And given where we've been in the City Hall, it actually will be helpful for us to have votes on the questions, and my guess is some general consensus, but it would be helpful for us to have that.
Kathy, do you want to work on a motion that I think has the first two things in it, and then we can vote on that?
Can you just mark that up?
And Betty, no, Claire, you had some comments you wanted to make?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'd be fine with us looking at the second set there of the mid-reductions and getting that back to us in November. And, you know, I think with the JEO conversation and this rebid, I think it's time to, if we're really sincere about wanting to explore all options, then I think we do need to reconsider if the E-Web site is the place for us to land. I had been reluctant to revisit that question over this last year, but with the introduction of the county conversation, I just can't see why we would not include that in our deliberations. And I don't even know if this council ever got a tour of that building so we could actually see what it might mean to move our City Hall there. I mean, if we're talking about a legacy building that's going to last, it's right there on the river, looking as beautiful as ever. And I think it would be well within our budget and give us a beautiful building. I'm very concerned about the cost of our new building, even with these potential reductions, and that we're going to have a diminished City Hall at the end of it. So I'm not sure what it would take to try to put that back on the table and have some actual robust discussion and investigation of that E-Web site, but I really believe it should be back as part of the conversation now.
My suggestion, Claire, is there are two ways to do this. You can ask for, somebody can ask for a work session on that, or someone can make a motion and see what the will of the council is about exploring E-Web. Either one of those will work.
Mayor?
Yes, Greg.
You know, I'm inclined to concur with both Mike and with Claire about exploring E-Web as part of the palette of options that we have on this. I think that we really haven't explored the viability fully of E-Web. And now that E-Web is ready to make some significant moves in terms of moving their location and their operations out to Roosevelt, I think that we should look at that as part of the discussions that we're having with the county and with the current iterations around projections for the new City Hall. So I would be supportive of a work session around that.
Does somebody, if you just put out a work session?
Well, I'll, Mike can do it, and I would, I would support that.
All right. And Mike, you had something you want to say now?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was going to say, I have intended for some time, as you can probably guess, to make a motion that puts this part of the discussion back on the table when it's appropriate to do so. It's just been my sense that with the conversations we've had and updates, it hasn't been the appropriate time to do so yet, because we already know a great deal about that. And I agree with Claire about the touring part, but we had only a partial tour, and then a couple of councillors went, not the full council. And it was under the, under the guise of different circumstances at the time where the staff had made presentations about what was needed and what it would cost that are no longer the case at E-Web. So it would be a very different set of circumstances today. So I suppose I would look forward to us having a work session, and I will ask for a poll. I think the appropriate timing to do so was as we get a little farther from now, as Mike has mentioned, that was the reason for my questions. We have to do this now, but it doesn't presuppose that we can't make a different decision at a different time, it's just to get us the best information. But I would suggest that once all of the details of the choices are available, it may look like a very attractive option. So I will look forward to that.
Chris, you'll be next, but I just wanted to make the comment that if your decision is to look at the E-Web building, you have to look at it through the lens of what we look at everything else. It's like, what are the energy efficiencies of the building? How does it meet our goals? What's the cost of changes that would have to be made to make it usable for us? And so those are, that's part of the equation of the discussion too, long and short term. All right, Chris.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I get in with you, please?
Sure.
I, to build on my previous thing about being open-minded, I am willing to entertain conversation about the E-Web building. I was one of the councillors that toured it the previous time, and I saw a lot there to be attracted to. I also saw some things that created questions for me that we would definitely want to have answers about before we proceeded any further down that conversation. And also, channeling what I said earlier, I want to seek certainty as soon as possible. So I would not want a conversation about E-Web to somehow slow down this whole discussion and start turning it into another long merry-go-round. And I can recall from exposure I had to previous negotiations with E-Web, it is not unusual for them to turn a simple negotiation into years of conversation. So I think if we're going to talk with E-Web, we need to talk with some of that certainty in mind, that, yeah, let's talk, let's see what, but we're not going to talk for two years and dink around about this thing, about that thing. And I don't want to denigrate my good friends at E-Web, but on the other hand, I want some certainty sooner rather than later about what the heck we're going to do with City Hall. So yes, if you put out a work session poll, I'm willing to vote for it. I'm willing to take a look at E-Web, but I'm willing to take a look at E-Web with the same kind of terminal certainty that I need around this whole City Council conversation, City Hall.
George Pauling.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, Mayor, you mentioned something about the massing that's going on. I think when that's presented to the entire council, that we'll get a better idea of the different possibilities that we're currently looking at, and how the City Hall, the courts and everything else can fit into that downtown area. However, based on the Skinner family descendants getting involved in questioning whether or not this butterfly lot can be used, based on what the judge rules, the butterfly lot may be completely out of the conversation, which changes the dynamics of the conversation going on with the JEO and the ERG right now. So I would be willing to vote yes on a work session for discussing the E-Web building for a number of reasons. One, you know, we now have somebody at the, at E-Web, the General, New General Manager that has a clear, concise vision. The official word that we're now getting is that, yes, they're, they're looking at selling the building, they're wanting to do that. And three, we're starting to get a growing number of people throughout the community saying, take a look at that, take a look at that property, see what you can come up with. My understanding is that there was some sort of a study done, I don't know, several years, two years ago, about the E-Web building, but I don't know if that was done as far as refurbishing for the E-Web headquarters or just a general refurbishing and upgrades and everything else. But it would help, I think, if we could find that report, kind of go through it and pick the highlights out of it, if, when we do have our work session. Thank you.
George Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I was really opposed to the E-Web site at first. I mean, it's an attractive site, it's a beautiful building, it's got plenty of parking, seems to be plenty of space, you can expand it well as the city grows. I mean, like 50 years from now, whatever we're designing now might be too small, but that would be a place you could expand. I opposed it because I didn't see it as being in, you know, the heart of downtown like this, this building is, and this is kind of like the seat of government. We're here, the county's here, the state office building's across the street, most of the federal offices are across the other street. It's like, this is government central. However, given all the complexities and rising costs, I'm willing to look at the website And just see if, with all this other information that we have, I think, I think it would probably be foolish of us not to include that as a possible viable option. And so I don't know, that's six of us that are voicing support for looking at it again. And so I don't know how that's going to fit in to our ever-
You might have to come to another meeting.
More crowded schedule, but I would support that. I think maybe we, I think we do, we should take another look at it, more detailed look. Thank you.
How about putting a motion on the table? Alan?
Yeah, I move to direct the city manager to continue with work on a rebid option that includes the low and no-cost reduction items presented at the work session, and continue to work with, work on a rebid option and explore simplification of the south facade, including elimination of the double skin.
Second.
Moved and seconded? All right, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four. On the phone?
Claire votes yes.
George votes yes.
Greg? He was hearing left.
And the mute button.
That's four, six.
Six.
Six in favor, and opposition, one. It passes. All right, so I think we're done with the business of the day. Thank you. Thank you.